That that are on the.
Gary, when you said hip, that might be the next thing.
Is there any thought given to allowing us to pay fees online, having an online portal?
That's a good idea.
I mean, not that I'm not making at this point three or four trips to town anyway in the day. So like I ran into Doppa Chappa.
Yes, you can go through feed funds.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Okay, so five thirty one. Okay, we have two topics that I had put out there. Not sure which one we want to address first. And I have asked Mr. Austin to join us. I just sent him the invite, so it may take a little bit for him to connect. But I think, in my opinion, I think we should just do the homecoming thing or the athletic handbook quickly delicious. Okay. So it was brought up at the board meeting, you know, and we talked about going to the homecoming committee. Mr. Austin had a chance to talk to a couple of the staff members. But we want the kids involved too, so we haven't had that opportunity, obviously. So what I provided was from the athletic handbook. Talks about eligibility for the homecoming court. So it starts in the bottom of page seventeen and ends on the top of page eighteen. It kind of spells out how you're eligible for the court, how you're selected for the court. And again, I just, I don't know if there's any other direction you wanted to give. I asked Vicki to be here as well. I see Matt's, there's Mr. Austin.
And one thing about homecoming court, you know, it's kind of evolved over the years. So people can hear me, I guess. You know, I, when I was at high school, I was senior football players and then the girls would get voted on. And then when I started working here in the fall of nineteen ninety, it was still sort of the same way. Then we started, then we changed it to senior athletes. And then if you were a senior athlete, you had to participate in a fall sport for your junior, senior year. Unless, let's say you were out your junior year and an injury would have ended your season. We had experiences of kids coming out as seniors and then once homecoming court was done, homecoming, then they quit.
I could think of the exact same.
You could probably think of, yeah. And so, so I don't know how you want to change it, you know. Some schools open it up to the whole high school where they even vote the male representative and the female representative from each class.
So you're saying like a senior could vote for the freshman class for their representative?
Well, the freshmen, the freshmen would vote for the male representative and the female representative. Because right now, only the girls are chosen by vote. It's your senior fall, male athletes are the escorts.
I honestly, I have no issue with the way the male athletes are voted on. I don't know how to appease everyone for the female selections, I'll be honest.
I think it is important to give the students a chance to weigh in on this.
I think so too.
And I'm of the opinion that it should not be different based on gender. If we're gonna do, if we're gonna have a set of standards that apply to the male population of the school, wouldn't we have the same set of standards that apply to the female population? So that's my thought, but again, I'd like the students to weigh in.
So would you think possibly senior male athletes and senior female athletes would be an option?
That would be an option, or it's voted, both genders are voted on? I know you vote for your both male and female. Or some other set of criteria, it just seems archaic to have, we do it this way for the boys and we do it this way for the girls.
So is that something, now when we talk about getting the students involved, do we ask students in as far as that?
I think.
I don't want to get the cart full of horse, we don't even know if we're gonna have homecoming this year.
Yeah.
So I don't want to spend.
Chances are very slim, we might have something.
We don't know. Mr. Austin?
Yeah, I mean, I can chime in a little bit. I talked with the homecoming advisors a little bit too, and they're kind of along the same lines there. If we're gonna make it equitable, it'd be more probably vote on males, so everybody gets voted on and then almost have a king and a queen for homecoming. I do think you need student input and what they'd like to see, which obviously we're not gonna get for a couple of weeks until we can have our first student council meeting, which would be a virtual meeting on one of those Wednesdays during meeting times. But I guess I'd like to know what direction are we looking for from you guys? Because you guys are the ones that kind of brought this up. And I understand the equity part of it, because yeah, the girls are voted on, the boys, it's because you're a senior athlete. So if you start doing senior girl athletes in the fall and senior boy athletes in the fall, now you're gonna start getting even more people on that court. And I don't know if it means as much at that point to be on court if it's just, I gotta go out for a sport. But I mean, you could vote both on, you could, I don't know, there's probably some other ways around it, but I do want to get student input on that. And that's where the advisors were too, they'd like to see student input with that.
Well, I brought this up. And I believe that there should be limited voting on any student in a public school system. We as parents send our kids to school to learn, we don't, we don't send them to school to get voted on by their peers. It seems to me like it's a popularity contest at minimum. And if we, if we use the prom as an example, I don't know when it was changed, but there was always a court voted on for prom. That got changed and I don't know why, I would imagine for some of the same reasons. I mean, I know that was with the junior class, but I could, I could foresee homecoming being about the seniors, prom being about the juniors, and the freshmen and sophomores, they just gotta wait until their junior year, I guess, to be on part of a court. But the voting process, I think, should, should stop.
Are you just talking about athletes though?
See, that brings up another question. Homecoming in itself, is it, is it a sports function? I mean, should you, should you be part of a sports program? Or does FFA count as a club or math team or key club? I'm just, I'm just saying a few of the clubs, forensics. I mean, should you be part of a club to be on homecoming court as a senior or at some point during your high school career? I don't know, I think, I think it's time to take a look at that. Voting, voting kids that are fourteen years old, I don't think they need to be voted on. Doc?
I just want to share that, I mean, I share Larry's concerns, I share Joni's concerns. But I hesitate to basically say what should be done, you know? Because I think the question I have is, what's the point of homecoming? You know, why, why do the kids want a homecoming court? Why do they want a king and queen or just a queen? And what is the meaning that it provides them? And I think, I would just encourage the, when you're seeking student input, I would just encourage them to ask that question. And, and, you know, and I think couching that in terms of fairness and, and of both agendas and just trying to be sensitive to what's the most appropriate way to have this kind of process while at the same time honoring some age-old traditions that might mean a lot to some of these students and alumni, et cetera. I mean, I get homecoming is for alumni and with the football game, I get all of that and I, you know, that shouldn't be tampered with. But dealing with the selection of kids and the court and the king and queen, it's just, you know, I support having the kids and staff just take a hard look at it and say, you know, what do we want to achieve and celebrate as a class and as a, as a high school with this event? And how can we, how can we do it in a way that seems as inclusive as possible and not as exclusive as possible? And I'd like to see what they come up with.
I think the one thing that, the one thing I guess stands out to me is when you can have a homecoming candidate as a sophomore or freshman and then they can turn around now and be a homecoming queen as a senior queen candidate. I just, to me, I've always thought that that was, in my opinion, not right. Because I don't think you should be on court twice representing your class. I mean, I think in all fairness, that you had your day in the sun, it's time to let somebody else in. And that's one thing I just, I've never agreed with.
I think we're in a position maybe where, you know, Monday, we can say, okay, we're gonna accept the handbook as it is, understanding it's a living document and once we get some feedback from the students, you know, because we'll need something in place for athletic code and stuff like that. We'll have to approve something, but with the board having understanding, once we hear from the students that, you know, we do have the ability to go back and changing this section doesn't change anything that the students would sign in terms of a code or contact.
And we want to. Right, Andy?
Yeah, for sure.
I think that's, that's the recommendation I'd like to see as of right now. And we could certainly look at this and make any adjustments necessary for next year if need to be or if the students feel that way.
Yeah. And I will admit that even the term king and queen, I mean, we got away from that two hundred and some years ago. So maybe we ought to re-identify the top priority, a king and a queen also.
It currently only recognizes the queen, a queen for homecoming.
Sure.
And I think I referenced this once before, someone had asked me, you know, why isn't FFA or the math team or somebody else represented? And when, when I went to the, the girls and the guys that happened to be on the court, I think literally everything that we offer. And again, because of our school size, you know, somebody can be FFA, FBLA, forensics, maybe they run cross-country, you know. So our kids are involved in a lot of things, so a lot of those organizations and activities are represented in some way, shape or form. And the other thing that I feel good about is, as my time as a building principal, trying to get student voice in a lot of these things that really impact the students. And I know Matt has done a great job continuing that, so I certainly would say, I would ask that you, like Andy just said, you know, recommend passing the athletic handbook, knowing that this is going to be addressed, the committee will get student involvement, want student council involvement, so that their voice is shared as part of this. And then we can come back with changes, again, whether we have a homecoming this year or not, it's anybody's guess. But as we move forward, we want to make sure that we're making improvements and giving that student voice. That's fair enough.
Does, Mr. Austin, do you feel like you have the direction you need?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think between myself, Ms. Doll, I mean, we can certainly look at some things. I know the advisors I can reach out to tomorrow, one of them was gone here. And like I said, I talked to both of them briefly, but maybe it is something where we'll, I think, you know, if we can shoot for that first week of school, having a student council meeting on one of those Wednesdays. I'm not sure which one's scheduled, they're kind of all scheduled out already. But all the clubs plan on having their meetings, they're just gonna do them virtually. But whenever that student council one is, we'll get that on the docket right away. And we'll set that up to talk about what that may look like. I guess, is there any other direction from you guys? Ms. Doll, do you have any other input that way?
No.
Well, certainly, Matt, I would look at other schools and see, see what their programs are, what they have done. Because I know our closest schools have changed theirs.
Sure, I can, I can reach out and figure out what other schools are doing here and then I can bring it back to the student council and we can start working on something like that. And with the understanding that, yeah, obviously, we may have homecoming, we may not have homecoming. Maybe this is a year out yet, you know, it depends on some of the logistics of things. But I think we're all comfortable in the sense that we need to, I guess, look at changing it if possible or if the student body feels it needs to be changed.
So will you open up to all students or will it be a committee?
It'll be the student council committee would be the first ones to see that and then we'd probably take it to all students after that. That's usually how they meet and they talk and then usually if it's a big issue like something like this or a big thing like this, we would send out it, send it out to all students and survey. But like with anything, not everybody's ever gonna be happy, so. But I think it's something that we can certainly look into.
Is the video of this meeting going to be released to publicly?
It's being recorded.
It is. So it'll be out there. So if any parents has, has concerns or recommendations, certainly they can reach out to you, Matt.
I would appreciate if they did, yep. I think that's the best way to go about it. Again, it's not bad to look at ideas and explore things and that's, that's what the student council's for, so.
Okay, I need to move on to the paid time off. This came up too at a board meeting, was, was part of the employee handbook. I had shared with all board members kind of the federal guidelines, kind of a graph, that what the federal government is recommending in relationship to the virus and what are expected of employers. I can say that we've had two cases now down at the elementary school through Kramer's. And when I spoke to their safety coordinator, he referenced this same graphic. He says, yeah, we're following this, these guys have up to two weeks' time paid off. The most recent one, somebody showed up to work and was sent home at eleven o'clock because his wife called him and said, I, his wife had been tested and came out positive. They discouraged ride sharing, but in this case, these two guys live in the same community, they come from the same area and just happened to ride together that day and they sent them both home. So what you see before you, I've shared this with the staff too, because they're concerned about, you know, what happens if I'm exposed, what happens if my child is exposed or is positive? And so I tried to send this information out showing that some things are part of sick days, some things are not part of sick days. And I would recommend that we, we use this as kind of our starting point or frame of reference. If, if a individual, if an individual is exposed, contacted because they've been exposed to it, they have to quarantine for fourteen days. And the fourteen days starts the day of exposure, so they might not know for a few days. So they could actually have been here at school. So for the bulk of, whatever they know, for the bulk of, from the time of exposure, fourteen days, they are supposed to stay home. Now, they may not develop any symptoms, they may be perfectly fine, they may never test positive. But I would look at that individual and ask them to continue working, especially as a teacher or sports staff, just doing it virtually. So I wouldn't necessarily say that they are on any kind of time off at that point in time because they are working and doing their job remotely. So, but I think, you know, kind of when it came back to like the spring, I think, because Andy, you made this suggestion for this topic. If we are shut down because the governor comes in and says, okay, you need to close for two weeks. Correct me if I'm wrong, but were you thinking more of the people that can't work from home? So like our maintenance staff that if we are shut down and nobody's allowed in the building, our maintenance staff is not working and?
I just more wanted to be clear across the, I didn't want there to be gray area going into the year. Because at some point, somebody's gonna have fourteen days where they can't be here.
Right.
You know, and whether it's, you know, we send them home to work virtually and put somebody in their classroom so the kids can be here and do it that way, however you guys figure the semantics out. I just wanted it to be clear, okay, if I was teaching a student and feel fine and I get sent home because the student tested positive, am I gonna lose fourteen of my accumulated sick days? What if I only have ten?
Right.
I just wanted it to be clear at the board, clear to the staff, to everybody how we were going to handle the situation before we just went ahead and greenlit at the handbook.
I don't, I don't see why it'd be an issue if we have to hire a substitute teacher. I mean, to be in the classroom while that teacher is still home teaching virtually. Why would that be, would that be an issue? I guess that's a better way to put it.
And I just, I didn't know who was gonna take issue with what if people couldn't be here.
And all respect to the teacher, I mean, if she, if she became exposed, even if she's not positive, obviously she needs to be home quarantined. And we just can't basically say, well, you're, you're home, too bad, and they're not getting paid, you can't do that.
Right.
She deserves her money.
And that's our expert, you know, that's our, that's our class curriculum expert that we want to be able to continue to use if at all possible.
But if we gotta, if we gotta, if we gotta pay a substitute teacher, then so be it.
These guidelines feel, they're obviously coming from, down from the federal government. But based on my experience in the corporate side of things, this is very standard. This is, you're expected, if you're able to work from home, you're working from home and the business will make accommodations and even the two-thirds pay is pretty standard from what I've seen in industry. So I'm comfortable with this approach.
Yeah, I see no issue myself. Just be comfortable making a recommendation at Monday's board meeting then? Sure, I'll make that recommendation, I'm fine with it. To kind of use these guidelines as our, as our reference so that everybody knows. It's a situation, we all find ourselves and we didn't ask for, we all gotta work through it.
Right.
That's just the way it is.
So the policy Mitch, when the definition of being exposed, so let's say a child in one of the rooms of the elementary school tests positive, that particular child's teacher would be considered exposed and so a teacher, every, the?
Exposure is, and go ahead and jump in, Dr. Dunn, anytime you want, but exposure is close contact for at least fifteen minutes. So within six feet and for more than fifteen minutes.
Okay.
And, and the fifteen minutes can be, can accumulate over time. So I might walk by your desk and help you answer a couple of questions and then I go somewhere else and I come back. So if my interactions with you during the time you're in my room or we're interacting adds up to fifteen minutes, that's considered that close contact and that's what they would use for kind of their contact tracing.
And the county will tell us that, correct?
Yes, the county, the county won't, you know, the county will contact that individual.
They'll give the orders, who has to quarantine.
So if I'm, if I'm, if I'm the sick, you know, the positive test, they will, they will contact the school and say, there was a positive test and we have done the contact tracing. The county will contact individuals and let them know, you've been exposed, you, you need to quarantine for fourteen days. You were exposed on Tuesday, August fourth. So I have to quarantine, if today is when I knew, then I have to quarantine for twelve more days. Does that sound accurate, Dr. Dunn?
Yeah, that sounds good. I think if we did have a positive case in a classroom and the kids are all masked, teachers masked, and there's not a lot of direct contact, I think we'd need to consult with the health department as far as saying whether that teacher needed to be quarantined as well. You know, if, I'm thinking mainly the teachers that would spread across several classes like art or music or those kind of electives, you know, or the high school subject matters like English and math. But you know, if you, if you've got like a second grade teacher that's assigned to one cohort and you quarantine the cohort, you could, you could theoretically keep the teacher home and, and continue to teach them virtually, you know, while both the cohort and the teacher are in quarantine. But I, I hesitate to say that if a, if a child is quarantined, that their teacher is automatically quarantined.
Gentlemen, I have another meeting I have to get to and then be back here at seven o'clock. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
So, I mean, again, I've sent this out to staff members saying, you know, this is, this is at least the starting point. Here's what the federal government guidelines are. Any, any other questions around anything that you think you need to clarify?
Hey Mitch?
Yes?
I just think it's, I support these guidelines as well. I just think it's gonna be important to track these expenses through the year. How much sick pay we're paying out? How much, you know, how many substitute teachers are we having to hire? All related to COVID-related loss of, loss of work. You know, I, I think it's, it's gonna be important to track all of that, not only just for informational purposes in the district in terms of how this hybrid model and the quarantining protocols, how that are, how they are adversely affecting our ability to hold school, you know, in a fully functioning way. But also, you know, in case we incur several thousand dollars in additional sick pay, that, you know, there, there may be some potential to recoup that at some point down the road if, if funds become available. So I just think it's important to, to, to track that through the year.
Sure, yeah. And I would, I'll ask Angie to chime in, she can kind of tell you, you know, when we talk about substitute teachers, we have a lot of substitute teachers that are retired individuals. So, you know, I know you've been, you and I have had conversations about people not willing to come back anymore, you know, kind of. So what have you seen so far?
I've had several say that if there was an option for being a virtual substitute, they would be more than willing to help out that way if there was any plan for that in place. Several have said that, you know, when this passes, they'd be more than willing to come back in person. But during this time, they're just not comfortable being in person during COVID. And then we've got some that are planning to come back and help us out.
So I think our sub pool is, is getting smaller.
It's getting smaller.
Just due to the virus. So I think there's a lot of things we can kind of try to track and hopefully we can get them to bounce back. But we did have one sub who simply just, it's, I'm just going to let my license go. It's time for me to renew my license, I'm just letting it go. He's an older gentleman and has been a sub in our building for years and a very reliable sub and?
And several have talked with their physicians and asked their opinions too as to what they thought they should do. And, you know, they haven't come right out and said, do not go into that atmosphere, but with their guidance, they.
Dr. Dunn?
Would it be prudent, given the situation and anticipating potentially a lot of subs, especially if we increase our contact days in school? Would it be prudent to try to recruit people willing to sub from the community to try to have a larger list going into the school year?
Yeah, it's something we can certainly look at. Kind of going back to the previous scenario of I fit that level of exposure, but I have no symptoms, I'm not feeling ill. I might be asymptomatic and have a positive result, but I can be at home teaching. We know we're gonna need an adult in the building, in that room at least. You know, so as the kids come in, okay, everybody take your seat, make sure you're following the guidelines, but the teacher? But the teacher at home is the one that's gonna be really doing the instruction. We have some measures set in place where if somebody in-house fills that role, they're compensated $14 for, for sitting in, you know, giving up what was their prep period, their, their preparation period. They give that up and sit in a class, they get paid $14. I believe there's probably gonna be some administrators who are filling the role of substitute sit-in at times as this year goes along, but.
We're middle schoolers.
You know, we can reach out to, we can certainly reach out to, to, to people that have applied for jobs that maybe never landed a job and ask if they would like to be on our sub list, you know, for the potential being called in. But it is, you know, our issue is, it's everybody else's issue as well. You know, we might have a lot of retired staff people from Mineral Point who were willing to come back and sub and now aren't necessarily willing to do that due to the conditions, but we can certainly try to reach out. Maybe encourage some people with four-year degrees to just apply for that sub license so that they would meet the requirements at the state level to, to come in and, and sub for us.
Mitch, if we're talking about the, the COVID being a reason that a staff has to, has to leave our school for 14 days and we have multiple staff leaving for that reason. I mean, one would think that, that we would go to all virtual. I mean, is that, is that just common sense thinking, thinking that?
Yes, you know, and I would get, I would get that guidance from county health as well. You know, like you said, if we have five or six staff members at the elementary school that have to quarantine because of exposure, it'd be a matter of, okay, what, what's the county's recommendation? And that might be, the elementary just has to go all virtual and the middle high can continue as is.
Right.
The, the, the big thing will be, we don't have a lot of staff anymore that travel back and forth. You know, maybe a handful, speech and language, maybe a couple of the coaches, but some of those things are, are changing a little bit for this upcoming year. But the, the big thing I think that will end up probably shutting the district down will be brothers and sisters between the two buildings. You know, there's a positive case in the middle school and there's a sophomore brother and a fourth grade sister. Then we might end up having to shut the district down and switching 100% to virtual at that time.
And in either building, are the teachers altogether part of the day for lunch? I guess lunch hour would be great, would be about the only time that they would spend much time together?
Yes.
And, and do you develop a plan or has it been talked about with your staff to?
Mr. Austin, do you wanna chime in? I don't, you know, I, I would imagine a lot of staff are gonna look to be eating in their own classrooms now, you know, just.
Yeah. Um, we've talked briefly about it, but I would imagine the same thing. Most staff members are most likely going to eat in their classrooms. If anything, they'd eat in small, small groups, you're talking maybe three people. But I'm sure they'll space out pretty well that way, cause but three people in a classroom, you get pretty far away from each other. But I don't imagine a lot of them would wanna come in and sit in the lounge because it's a fairly tight area to put all the high school staff or all the middle school staff in that sense if it's a middle school lunch.
Right.
I mean, really, the only other time would be like on, like Wednesdays when, when we have those PLC, like your teaching teams. Like you might have maybe four or five teachers, but if they're in a classroom, they can socially distance.
Yeah. Yep, that P, I would agree. That PLC time might, was probably gonna look a little different this year just because we don't wanna bring everybody into one big room and just, so.
And, and that's some of the hope behind the, the hybrid model, where the cohorts that we can, we can keep exposure to a minimum and continue face-to-face as long as we possibly can. I was part of a meeting with swell superintendents and, and most of them are, yeah, we know at some point in time, we're gonna get shut down. We're rolling the dice, we're doing this, but we know it's not if, it's when. And, and hearing so much from everybody else that a face-to-face touch, a personal touch, that opportunity, if we can, if we can stay in that hybrid and keep that touch going longer, we're hopeful that has a better outcome. And, and if our numbers can stay down, we can start to bring, you know, more groups back and transition back to a full everybody five days at some point in time. But, you know, that's, that's the hope, I think, behind the hybrid is that we limit, limit exposure and limit, you know, if, if it's a freshman, that cohort might just miss one Monday and still hit their 14 days. And the sophomores, juniors and seniors can still come in and then the next week, you know, everybody would be virtual for that freshman group on then week two, but then on week three, they're all back in again. So it's, we're, we're hoping that that is how things would play out for us, is allow us more face-to-face time for a longer period of time.
Virtual learning, Mitch, are we, are we done with this? I mean, we.
I, I think you're comfortable, you know, I'm curious to see if you'd be comfortable making that recommendation.
Was there anything else for the personnel committee as far as?
I had mentioned that we had talked about the employee handbook and the moral turpitude.
Oh, sure.
And.
What, what did you just say?
You're gonna make me say that word again.
I'm sorry.
Moral turpitude.
Thank you. And that, while we don't wanna lose sight of that, we could maybe put a pin in that and know that we should revisit that, but we have a lot of irons in the fire right now. And so maybe that one, maybe we can accept the handbook as is, knowing that we do need to revisit that and put some clearer guidelines in place around what our expectations are if somebody does have an infraction.
Well said. I can speak for myself and say I would appreciate that too. There are a lot of things going on yet here in the next two weeks before our kids come back and I just feel like I'm running downhill and it's, somebody's breezed the hill that I'm running down as we get ready. So there are a lot of, a lot of things still in play that we need to make sure we hammer down. So I, I would appreciate that opportunity.
Are we adding this though to the employee handbook?
It's already in there, isn't it?
This, no, what, what Joni just talked about is, this is not.
This would be an addendum, so this would be one to add. Add this as an addendum for this year.
This is from a federal release, Mitch, federal guidelines, correct?
Correct. Yeah, cause it talks about Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the Emergent Pupate Sick Leave, the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act. I mean, it's, so it's all of the things coming out of the federal government and they apply to our situation as well as the corporate world or anywhere else and all of this applies, so.
Okay, and I, and I completely understand for staff that are east, I'm gonna call them essential, I guess. How about, how about staff, the, the support staff that may, may see their child once a week? I mean, do we, do we keep them on then, Mitch, or do they fall underneath this set of guidelines too?
They, they would.
I know we talked about.
As an employee, but it, you know, cause that, that was my question and it's like, okay, if, if the governor were to come in and say, like he did this last spring, we're shutting school down, no one's allowing it, only the essential people. And, you know, they, he defined what essential was at that point in time as well. We had staff cleaning, so I was able to bring staff in for a while and then all of a sudden it's like, okay, we have nothing left to clean. So you had agreed to pay people during that time.
And that was, that was board, board action.
Correct, correct. So if we get into that situation again, do you want to have something that you're committed to now? Or do you, or is that something you would prefer to wait for if it were to happen again? If the governor were to come in and have to say, we're shutting school down and nobody's allowed in?
Okay, well, there's, there's a big difference there with, with shutting schools down and, and shutting the whole building down.
Correct.
Of not letting employees in or, or teaching virtually from their classrooms, which I think is very important.
If, if, if the governor were to come in and say, we need to shut schools down for two weeks, like he originally had said last spring, I would look at that and say, okay, please don't say anything more because let's bring people in and make sure when the end of those two weeks, our, our buildings are disinfected top to bottom, inside out. Let's keep bringing those people here to work and pay them to work. If he were to say, you can't do any of that, then in my mind, I look at reason number one. The employee is subject to federal, state or local quarantine or isolation order. Which is kind of what the governor had done to that stay-at-home order was an isolation order. Then they all, you know, they, you go across here, they're, they're qualified for up to two weeks of pay. So, so I think some of those situations will come back to this document. I don't know if there'll be anything that does not. You know, that, I think right now, I just don't, can't picture a scenario that might change how that works. You know, and maybe it is, at that time, it is an, an emergency board meeting to make a decision around that.
But is it your opinion, Mitch, that this, the, these guidelines here, they don't, they will not dictate if we can have our employees come into the building?
Right.
Or?
If, if you.
If it's like you said, the state mandate, then it's out of our control.
Right.
It's up to the discretion of the school, then, then the board would get involved then and decide?
Well.
Or how would that work?
Yeah, I would, you know, if it were, okay, we don't want any students in the building for two weeks and, and that's basically what the order is, well, none of the maintenance people are students. Now, in my mind, if they're saying, I don't wanna come in the building, then I would say you need to use sick time.
There you go.
If, if you wish to s- s- stay home from work, because there's no order in place that says you have to stay home. Otherwise, come on in and, and we can do our cleanings, we can make sure we get in all the nooks and crannies and, you know, all of those things.
And I think that needs to be, that needs to clarify, Mitch. Personally, I probably that was clarified.
Hey Mitch?
Yes?
I just wanna follow up on what, on the discussion of kind of putting some non-urgent issues, putting them off due to the fact that we're dealing with so much other stuff. I think it's just, it might be a good practice just as kind of a board functioning process, you know, Joni, I think, used a great word at the meeting, calling it a parking lot. But I, I feel like we maybe could do a better job of saying, well, let's, let's follow up on this later. And then I think some things we forget to follow up on. You know, so it might be a good practice, I don't know exactly how best to do this, whether Angie had put it on the end of the minutes of, of a meeting or, you know, have, have a list of ongoing non-urgent items standing on the board agenda so that we can at least see them and, and remember them. I don't know, I, I, I just, I think having kind of a, a better habit of, you know, if we say, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this later, you know, let's put it on a, on a list that we check on frequently so that we don't lose sight of, of those issues. Does that make sense?
Yes, that, as, as part of the PLC process, that's one of the things that comes through that process as well as you have your agenda and you have norms to your agenda and then you, you have this creation of what they refer to also as a parking lot. It's like, it's a, it's a topic, it's not on today's agenda or it's not on tonight's board meeting agenda, but it's something that might require some action, might require some study or some follow-up and, and put it in a parking lot. So we could certainly create that, that, that parking lot and, and then reference that as we move forward and, you know, if people are, have an interest to, you know, depending on what it is, if it's a simply me being able to get more information out to all board members, I can do that. If it's something that might require some study and maybe send it to a committee, we can certainly do that, but, but I, I don't think there's anything wrong with trying to use that a little bit more often. That, that concept of, hey, this is something that's important, I'd like to know more about it. It's not on tonight's agenda, but if you can find something, kick it out to us or let's get it on next month's agenda or something of that nature, get it to a committee. I, I think that's certainly something that's doable.
Awesome, thank you.
We are moving to a new format with Board Book.
Yeah.
Right, right now, it's referred to as Classic Board Book and we're moving to Premier Board Book. And within Premier, there are different modules, one being note-taking and it allows board members to make notes in Board Book and send to like the minute taker or the administrator or whomever.
We're disabling that.
You can wave and raise your hand via Board Book, so there are, are new features. And I've just attended a couple of webinars regarding this. I've got a training set up in a couple of weeks to go through and actually do the conversion from Classic to Premier. But there's definitely a feature that will help along the lines that you're referring to, so.
Sounds great, Angie. Thanks for taking the time on that.
Anything else for the?
Just on this document.
Yeah.
Now, the employees who are under four, five and six and getting two thirds, they are able to supplement the, the other third with their own sick leave, correct?
That, that's how I would interpret it, yes, yes.
And they're aware that that's open to them, that they're, I mean, can we just make sure they understand that's how four, five and six work?
Yes.
They're only gonna get two thirds and if you would like to be paid in full, then the other third needs to come from sick leave or, or personal days.
Yeah, with this being, with this being the accepted recommendation, then I'll make sure that that's clear to all employees. Well, at 6:17, if there is nothing else, we can adjourn the committee. Vice Chair?
I'm left to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
It is, yeah.